I'm not sure where the Rialto Bridge is.
Rialto Bridge is the bridge on State Street.
The State Street Bridge?
It's called the Rialto because of buildings on one side.
Oh, right, the one with buildings on it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's right there over the north branch.
Okay.
So, it would be a good opportunity for us to connect from Taylor Street, which has a plan already and is going to be reconstructed. And then we could kind of connect from Taylor Street back down to Main Street.
State and Main.
State and Main, yep.
How does this fit in with the scoping study that's being done in Berry and Main?
I think we would want to go and integrate the findings of that. So, if we end up with a street light, so there's a scoping study that's looking at Berry and Main. Whatever they do to Berry and Main, they're going to probably have to do at the other intersections. So, if you choose a roundabout, you'd probably need a roundabout from State and Main, and you'd probably need a roundabout for School Street. If you go with lights, you'd probably need a light, a light, a light, and they would have to all be timed. And so, that's the initial, some of the initial findings that, from what my understanding was, that's probably what they'd have to do. That's why they really can't look at one just in isolation. They have to look at, in fact, all the way out to Route 2, all the way through, although Route 2 could never be a roundabout. So, that's always going to be a light. But, the other ones would probably fit into, into multiple things. But, you can't do a roundabout with a light on either end because it would jam up the roundabout.
Oh, right. It kind of makes the roundabout.
Yeah, once, once the red light stops, it would pickle the roundabout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, you kind of have to keep roundabouts all the way through to make the roundabout idea work.
So, is, is that what they're going to talk about on Wednesday?
That's a Tom question. I don't know specifically what.
All right, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, I haven't been in the loop on.
There is a scoping study presentation on Wednesday.
So, are they giving the results of the scoping study?
Well, they're asking for public comment.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't done my homework on that one to know what's.
I know what they're proposing.
Public comment. Yeah, I don't know what they're proposing.
What they're going to ask for public comment on.
Okay.
That was why I emailed you today because it looked like that meeting was going to be at the same time as the project.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know. I'd have to do some work on that. So, that was the thought, was that we should have, for the municipal planning grant. I've done these in the past for, when I was in Berry, we did them on Merchant's Row. That was how a lot of the work got done there, to come up with how to rearrange the parking areas. We also did master planning for Summer Street area and how to accommodate, where do you put, where do you put parking? Where do you put? Those were a little bit more area-wide.
How do we spend that money? Like, who outside are you going to hire, just out of curiosity, for the State Street portion?
You'd be looking for probably somebody who's got a combination of engineering and landscape architecture because you're really looking at streetscapes. So, it's not just engineering. It really starts dealing with people and ADA and how do you, yeah, oh, definitely, you'd have to go to bid.
Okay.
Traffic flow and all of that.
Traffic flow, yep. Yeah, because you'll, you'll want to accommodate traffic on the street, but then you could start having the discussions of.
But, the focus is on this, as you're saying, the streetscape. So, they appear as aesthetics are a big.
Aesthetics, yeah, the, the whole thing for, for within, we're looking almost exclusively within the city right of way or sidewalks that may be within the private, but we're usually looking almost exclusively at what's in the city right of way. But, we'll talk, we'll get that for, for the next agenda as well.
So, that application has to go in by when?
That's the end of September as well.
Oh, okay.
So, that would be, I would first do this ARC GIS one and then afterwards do the municipal planning grant.
So, on the tenth, are we going to be looking at either of those applications?
You can probably look at the ARC GIS one.
That you'll have that?
Yeah, I should have that one either ready or, or close to ready.
Okay. While we're on the topic of applications, I received this in the mail today. It's from the Central Ramon Regional Planning Commission. Solicitation of municipalities to participate in enhanced, or in, in enhanced energy planning. So, this might be something for MEAC, the Energy Committee. I just wanted to make sure, flag it for, for you and for you, Mike, to make sure it was covered. This would be, the Regional Planning Commission has, will be receiving funding to assist three to six municipalities with the development of municipal plan energy elements that are consistent with the provisions of Act 174. So, there's an application process and the deadline is October 1st. I just wanted to, I don't think we need to do anything on it as the planning commission, but since I received it in the mail, I, I thought I should share it with you all.
So, what would the better strategy be? I mean, if we decided the Energy Committee to go forward with it, that would be something that we coordinate with Mike's office, though, right?
I, Mike would have to answer that question.
Professional entity.
It sounds like council would probably either need to sign off on you applying or on the, on the committee applying or apply itself. That'd be my guess, the city council. What are your thoughts? You're on the Energy, Regional Energy, Regional Planning Commission.
My, I mean, the only thing I would have to add is just from my experience on Regional Planning Commission is that they like to cover their bases. I think you probably received that as.
Courtesy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Kate Stevenson received it as well, and she sent it to me. So, we'll.
But, I won't worry about it.
Yeah, we may proceed on it and then, but I, I agree that we have to go to council to get the funding, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, having mentioned it, I'll move on. I don't need to read this. Other items, I just want to mention, I sent, I shared an email sharing the, the tragic news about John Anderson's daughter. And we have a card here for everyone to sign. And after the meeting, we can talk about the best way to, to reach out and all. So, just, if anyone does need to leave early, we'll just put that next to you, Kirby. And then finally, for, from comments of the chair, I think we should have a quick discussion, see how quick we can make it. At the last meeting here with just the planning commission, our last meeting was with all the, a lot of committees, but the one with just us, we were ticking through our metrics of changes to zoning based on the experiences that Mike's offices had in administering the new zoning bylaws. One of the issues that we talked about was calculating density based on buildable area in lots. Barb has some concerns about the way that the vote went. So, I, I don't want to rehash the vote to the extent that there's no new information. I don't know why, what, I don't think it would be productive for us to revote. But, I do want to use this opportunity here to help us fully understand the constraints of your office, Barb's concerns. And if there are new pieces of information, I mean, the two of you were here for the vote, that you, you didn't hear or didn't understand when you voted, please let me know because we will revisit it. I just want to find that balance of making sure we've had a full and robust discussion, but not redoing everything twice. That's, that's my concern. So, when, when we arrived, before we called the meeting to order, we started to talk about this a little bit. I'm going to recap what I understand, and then we can pick up from there. So, Mike's office is not getting a level of detail that you need to easily be able to tell applicants what amount of density they have if it's based on buildable area. Is that right?
Yeah, or the information is almost too detailed. It just, it's, it's not easy for us to administer and answer the basic questions that we need to be able to answer. The data we have is actually too detailed and too complicated to be able to easily answer the questions that we need to, even a basic question of, of whether somebody can add a, a new unit to their house.
So, it's a matter of not having the expertise to interpret data right now?
Yes, the GIS data is just too detailed to be able to make a quick, easy determination on some basic questions.
Okay. And Barb, your concerns are that we went into that, the original densities for all of the various districts were based in part on the, the idea that they were going to subtract buildable area.
Subtract 30% slopes from buildable area.
Right, well, the, you would be calculating density based on buildable area, and buildable area would be excluding 30% slopes as well as other natural resources identified on the inventory, right?
Yeah, wetlands and a few others.
We didn't make a determination about those, right?
We didn't. I, uh, let me see what the.
Last week?
So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, there was no discussion of that. We, we never intended.
But originally, yeah, originally that.
To keep that as it was.
That was part of what's not buildable.
Right, right. But, we didn't specifically address that in the motion.
Yeah, I don't.
No, no, I'm talking more general, like, the, the policy decision before the bylaw revisions were sent to City Council one year ago. That was my understanding of how it was structured. So, what we talked about before our vote was the difficulty of administering it. Again, we talked about the various restrictions on building scale, size, massing setbacks that do restrict the way the building looks in, in the area, how density interplays with that. And were there any other pieces to this discussion that I'm not recalling?
I think we had also, I think we had talked about the fact that the issues that had come up about buildable area, we, we had kind of addressed it in multiple places.
Yeah.
So, while we had talked about everything in isolation, we had actually ended up addressing the, the issue we had was that people were building big houses based on using density that was on steep slopes. But, we also came up with footprint, maximum footprint requirements and maximum height requirements as well. So, we were kind of addressing the same problem multiple times, and it was best managed by setting footprint and bulk enassing size, which we have done, which were also new to zoning. We didn't have footprint requirements. We now have footprint requirements. So, we, we had kind of addressed it in a couple of different places. So, maybe this wasn't needed any longer to keep buildings smaller.
And Barb, your concern is that it, it may appear to be a bait switch for members of the public who, who understood and acquiesced to the zoning proposal based on their understanding that buildable area would be subtracted from density. So, the sizing, scaling, all that.
Not quite, that 30% would be subtracted from the buildable area, and the buildable area would be the basis of determining how many units. And, you know, you're, you've been talking about footprint and, and mass and scale, and that's certainly all part of it. But, really, the issue here is the number of units that would be allowed on a parcel. And so, if we don't exclude.
Help me understand that.
All right.
I mean, I understand how density is calculated based on slope and how that limits the number of units. But, why is that an issue separate from size of the building?
Because the number of units could be sprinkled all over the, the property. It doesn't necessarily, especially if you got, if we went and say got a, a cottage cluster, those kinds of, because we have PUDs which also allow for density bonuses. So, we've got a lot of ways for, if, if it seems like we're excluding the rights of property owners to, to use their property, we have lots of bonuses that allow for that to happen if they go through the PUD process. So, really, the issue here is, yes, it's good to limit footprints, it's good to limit massing and scale and everything else, but it's also important to limit the number of units based on the available area of the site, the site, area of the site that should be developed. And frankly, 30% slope area should not be developed. So, that, if you, you know, if you're looking at a piece of property, I mean, it's sort of an example I gave before. If you look at Saban's pasture, if that were to be subdivided so that only the southeast, yes, southeast corner was a parcel on its own. And previously, it would not be developable because it has 30% slopes. But, if we eliminate that, then any number of units could potentially be put on that property. And whether or not they should be built there, you know, is another question. But, that was what I hoped we had handled by virtue of creating, looking at it from the standpoint of buildable area, not the standpoint of what's, what is, what are the outlines of this particular site.
So, but I guess the, the question is still, so that, that maximum allowable density is not the right to build that many units? And the slope factor is not also, if we're using it to calculate maximum allowable density, we're not saying anyone can build on that slope. So, if someone can build, you know, 10 units now, or, and they can build 50 afterwards, what is the, how is it in the public interest to limit, let's say, 10 families to move in here, now 50 can? What are we trying to address? What's bad about those extra 40 families moving here?
We're trying to address the, the character of the neighborhoods that these are going into. And we've already increased the density significantly in some of those.
What does character of the area mean? Like, the type of people, type of families?
No, 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 the number of units. There's a, you know, so there's a street with predominant.
I don't think of character as number of units.
It's the size of the buildings and the number of families that are there, the street, you know, cars on the street, all of that. So, if you have a, a street of one to three family structures, and suddenly you come in with 50, because now you're allowed to build that there. And by the way, we did allow for building on 30% slopes, didn't we, in one of our other votes?
We're lifting the prohibition requiring engineering plans and a hearing.
Just the hearing? I thought.
An engineering plans, yeah.
Engineering plans and a hearing, that's.
So, there's no engineering plans required for building on 30% slope?
Well, it's prohibited previously. We're lifting the prohibition, and in its place, we're requiring engineering plans and a hearing.
Right, so, so now the people can build on those 30% slopes as well. So, it's, I'm not saying that, I mean, I totally agree that additional density is really valuable and important. And we have the opportunity to create additional density that is still in character with the neighborhoods. And I think if we, we have to be very cautious about making sort of quick decisions that can have all kinds of other ramifications because we spent months talking about these different density, number of units per, per parcel. We spent months debating that, and we had a lot of comment from the public.
But, now, Mike, you said that the density was calculated based on 90%, right?
Yeah, when we did those 90% analyses, we did not factor in any slopes when we did those. So, it's still, I mean, it's still an arbitrary number, that 90% figure, because we, we, we tried to set it at 90%. It would come out, you know, somewhere around 90%.
Tried to set what at 90%?
So, what we previously had in the old zoning was entire neighborhoods. A good example is if you go up off First Street and Kent Street and that area, almost 60 to 70% of all parcels were non-conforming. And most of the structures were also non-conforming because the setbacks and, and the parcel sizes were somewhat arbitrarily picked. So, there was a minimum lot size of, I think, 9,000 square feet, and most parcels were less than 9,000 square feet. So, every time somebody came in to do something, if you were up on Town Hill, the rear setbacks were 75 feet and the front setbacks were 30 feet. Most lots had no buildable land because if you factored in where the rear setback and then where the front setback was, there actually was no place to build. So, what we did was did a 90% rule. We, we just looked at every parcel to go and say, all right, where do most front setbacks?
Just trying to adjust the zoning to match what was on the ground.
So, we.
90%.
90% of the property.
Oh, okay.
You know, we always know there are going to be some that you could just look and go and say, that's probably a bad idea that that parcel was that small. So, we kind of said 10% of the parcels will let be non-conforming, 10% of the structures will let be non-conforming. Let's just try to find rules that somewhat match what's on the ground, assuming that we like what the neighborhoods look like.
Yeah, the prior zoning wouldn't have allowed the Mount Villar to build the way it was built.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we want, we, you know, everybody agrees they like the city how it is. So, how do we?
Why did we make it illegal?
Yeah, why did we make it illegal to build this city?
No, I, I understood that was a concept in the previous zoning, just the 90% reference.
Yeah.
But, now I understand what you're doing.
All right.
We want to make sure 90% of the buildings in this neighborhood would be conforming to the standards we're setting.
Yeah.
And so, the 90% calculations for density were not taking into account, like, subtracting 30% slopes is what I'm hearing.
But, what Mike was just alluding to was that that 90% determination was based on the size of the parcels and potentially making the, the ones you referenced, for example, making those single or family homes or duplexes be able to have a conforming lot. 90% of those lots would be conforming with a single-family home on it. Because we allowed a single-family home on any size parcel, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we didn't, that 90% really technically was looking at the footprint size of the building, was looking at the parcel boundaries, not looking at the number of units.
Right, and that's.
We're allowing on this parcel.
Right, because that's where we get a little, like, we tend to kind of overreach as to how many people can live in a given building. I, I get really uncomfortable when we start messing with that.
We did two calculations. We did two calculations. We did one for minimum lot size and one for density when we did the 90%. So, if you look at the, the book that was made, there was a little book that was made that has both columns. One for what's the 90% for density of that neighborhood. Because, especially when you look at a place like Liberty Street or these other streets that have a lot of multifamily, it factored in. But, didn't factor and didn't, didn't exclude, didn't first exclude unbuildable land before it made those calculations. It just looked at the lot size.
So, for my vote last week, I can tell you, I mean, that what was most compelling for me was, for one, as we already went over tonight, that other regulations are in place to safeguard against the things we're talking about for character of the neighborhood. And, and then slope being another thing that, in a way, like, gets the density for me, I'm not seeing a nexus or a connection between a parcel that's more limited and what it, what a person can do with it because of, like arbitrarily because of the slope, not, not because of the physical constraints of the slope itself, but the way that we, we had set it up previously. It's just the presence of the slope means that you, that, for the person unfortunate enough to have a lot of 30% slopes, it's almost like they're not in that neighborhood. They're in a, they're in a different density, like, requirement-type neighborhood. And I just didn't see the connection between the slopes. And like, the slopes were being misused, in my view, because they didn't have the policy connection that other things, the other regulations that exist do have. Does that make sense?
Well, I guess I'm not really following the concept that our footprint and height limitations would necessarily have the same effect. That's what you're saying, is other, other requirements are in place. So, the ones that were mentioned were footprint, massing of the building, potentially height.
Site plan, condition of use, subdivision regulations, design requirements.
If those are, yeah, if those are part of that application.
Which, when do, when does, do those come in? When does condition of the use come in?
It would depend on the neighborhood. And in some cases, something could be prohibited. I mean, somebody could still have, be able to build 10 units, but if multifamily is not allowed in that neighborhood, they wouldn't be allowed to put 10 units.
So, this, this then puts simply AB back on the map, then. They could potentially have had how many units on that parcel?
If they could fit all of those 16 units into the bulk enassing, because that was the issue, was that, that was a, in order to fit 16 units on that parcel, they had to go and put them all in one big building. And it was going to be 5,000 square foot.
But, they could have.
Footprint, now they can't do buildings that big.
Right. But, if they, they could have stepped it down the hill because we're going to allow them to build on a 30% slope. So, they could have broken up that building into multiple buildings and still have, how many units were they allowed, 16?
I was assuming they made it through the whole hearing process and got it approved. I don't know that.
Under, under the old zoning, which had no footprint requirements and had no slope requirements, they still had to go and, they still couldn't, they had to fit the 16 into that one big building. That was the only way that they could fit 16, and they eventually decided not to do it.
Actually, I mean, that was the least expensive way because they were building at the head, at the top of the hill. But, that's not saying that they could not possibly have worked them into the, anyway.
Going down a rabbit hole here.
Yeah, I mean, they would have to engineer.
From either of you two, are there any other concerns about this? I mean, the, the pieces that we voted on last week that this is related to is item, I mean, in the chart, it's item 26, which is removing buildable areas from density calculations. And we voted on that to adopt staff recommendation, order one, with Barb dissenting. And then item 32, which is to remove the prohibition, building on 30% slopes, and in its place, require engineering plans and a hearing.
Is there any standards for that? Someone could come up with engineering plans that suggest, it's a terrible idea to do this, but if there are no standards, why would you?
It's, well, the idea is if it's going to the hearing, we do have staff downstairs in the engineering department who do review it. And usually what they're, what they are reviewing for, and maybe I can put a note that we should be more expressly clear in what we're asking for them to demonstrate. But, what usually, what Kurt is looking for is a foundation plan and a slope stability analysis. So, what he's looking for is, is a demonstration that whatever the engineering is going to work, is going to make that structure safe. And then separately, they look at an erosion control plan. If there's anything on the 30% slope, then generally what they're looking for is to make sure bank stability is maintained and other.
So, should we be clear about those, that that's what's being?
I can certainly put that as a note if we want.
And one of the issues with bank stability is that you can't plant, plant grass on anything higher than a 30% slope. So, establishing bank stability at 30% is, is iffy. So, at least with an engineered plan, you know, I would feel more.
Yeah, usually what we're looking, what he's looking for in the engineered plan is usually these steeper slopes are, are going to be used with retaining walls or some other type of engineered thing that's going to keep the bank.
Yeah.
And that's the issue that we had with, under the old rules, you couldn't.
The prohibition is complete and absolute. The prohibition is complete and absolute.
It's complete and absolute and you can't build a culvert across, you know, you can't put in a curb cut across a roadside ditch because roadside ditches were three to one slopes and three to one slopes are 30% and therefore you can't put in a new curb cut. We said that just isn't functionally working. We need to have at least some opportunity to address, especially in these small cases, of an ability to manage the slope, especially if you're going to say, I'm going to remove the 30% slope and make it a 10% slope and therefore I can then plant vegetation on it.
Well, I mean, we could remove that 30% slope allowance and limit it to specific areas if your concern had to do with drainage and culverts, not the whole site.
I mean, isn't it? I'm not interested in building on that kind of slope. I mean, do you think most people are going to?
There's one across the street from me. It almost ended up in the backyard of my neighbor's.
Yeah.
It was frightening.
Either they didn't do engineering plans or?
They didn't. They did.
Maybe needed a different engineer. All right, any more discussion about the steep slope, the removal of the 30% slopes or any more questions?
I guess I would make a motion then if we go forward with this the way it was voted on last time, that we should address the number of units allowed in all of the districts Because it was based on conditions that are no longer under consideration.
Does anyone want to second the motion for discussion?
I'll second please.
Sure, yeah. We have a discussion.
Okay.
I guess maybe I'm not understanding that, but when we have to look at every parcel then?
Every neighborhood.
No, every zone, every district, because we set the limitations by district and those districts were based on minus 90% rule for the most part. And we told the public that that's what we were doing, that we based those on that.
I would definitely think that we should, to the extent we can get some information on this, to know how much, what percentage of parcels across the entire city have these kinds of slopes and like getting that basic information and putting it before the city council when we make a recommendation to give them an informed, you know, to let them make an informed decision. I think we definitely need to do that. But as far as like on the front end, going in and revisiting the density, I mean, I'm comfortable with just making slope a non-factor and acknowledging at the same time, being very clear city council. Yes, this might mean that the densities are now more lenient than what you may have believed before. And let them, again, like I said, find out specifically how lenient that is and passing that info along. I do think we should do that.
I think the other piece of the information could be that it is technically possible to measure these things, it's just a question of resources and that staff currently doesn't have the resources, but that's also an option.
They may have the software, but they don't have the personnel, for example, that they've got, potentially.
Right, and it may not be a question of personnel, it could be something that's contracted out. We don't know exactly levels of the details, but that's another option.
So contracted out, say, to engineer someone who could readily, easily make a determination on each parcel.
Right, or they could pre-process a lot of stuff and answer those questions. The problem then becomes, what's the sustainability of that and when do you maintain it or update it or when we change it? But all of that's certainly, certainly possible. It's just a question of, do we, does that work the resources and is that going to help us accomplish our goals? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But I think we can communicate that to city council.
But that means, so what Kirby's suggesting is that we need some kind of an assessment of how many parcels, the parcels in the city that have 30% slopes on them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would help to pass that information along and I would be in support of that. I would also point out that just going off of what John said, I mean, for me too, as just a person who's studied policy and like really values simplicity when it comes to regulations and law creation, that I like the idea of cutting, factoring in the slope into it. I don't think it adds enough to justify the added complexity. Even if we can afford to do it, I don't think it's a good use of resources. I mean, I make that point too.
And I do feel like we got to a place with a lot of people where density was just a proxy for other concerns, like building size, other maybe traffic circulation issues. Like before, when we asked, like, really, what is it that we're getting at? And then you said building size and then parking on the street. If that's what it boils down to, then those are things we can address. Density is sort of a blunt hammer that we're saying, you know, unless you can afford this one plan, you can't live.
The people in the, up on Town Hill, Town Hill? I'm not sure that that was the issue for them. The issue for them was parcel size, single fam, how many families are going to be on each particular parcel size? And for me, for them, it's.
It's true, it's not for everyone.
Yeah, so I just think.
We definitely didn't please everyone with our.
No, but we did, we went a long way to adjust our numbers in order to make them feel more comfortable and.
Of course, we adjusted the numbers to make 67% of their parcels non-conforming, but.
Right, right.
And it's pretty, they should be on a, given the fact that there may be a few parcels.
They should, yeah, well, they had some level of protection for some of the parcels by exclusion of the 30% slope because then they felt like, oh, this might, so my neighbor can't suddenly turn their property into four families because they don't have the available area. Maybe now they may have that. But that would take, you know, more of an analysis, as Kirby said, of parcels that actually have the 30% slope.
That gets us right back to the same thing. There's just, there's just no way I'm going to have the resources to be able to do that analysis. Just, that's the reason we've got this problem in the first place, is the fact that to do that analysis is going to require way more expertise and computation than we can actually perform. And again, it comes back to what is the value, I think, in the end of doing.
I think we can present them with math though.
I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We could show them the math.
Well, I was thinking, I mean, we do know like about what percentage of the land is 30% or more in slope, right?
We have a map.
We can do it.
We have the LIDAR.
And just give estimates based on neighborhoods and what areas of the city that this impacts the most, just that basic info.
See, as you see from the map, most of the red is concentrated here.
Yes, yeah. Except, red is also roots, right, on that map?
Well, I mean, it.
So I'm afraid that could be really misleading, looking to look at a map.
In some cases, it excluded it, in some cases, it didn't. It just got, it depends, I think, on whatever algorithm they had run.
I'm afraid maps actually make it look like more of an impact than it really is because it includes some false positives, I think you'd call it.
Those are pretty minor in general.
Are they?
Yeah. I mean, a lot of, the parcel that you had clearly excluded buildings from the 30% slopes, the one that you showed us before.
Yeah. But what we end up, when, and our specific concern with this one was when we got to especially smaller parcels. And that was why some of the suggestions I had were to eliminate using it on small areas. We have on Main Street some actual applications that came in as you pass the school and start going up the hill. There were some parcels in there where either they wanted to subdivide or they wanted to go from two units to four units. And the question was, okay, how much buildable land do you have? And a lot of the red was actually within the footprint of the buildings. But we ended up making people jump through a lot of hoops because we just don't have the ability to answer the basic questions of, you know, how much, how many developable units can you have? And the project that they had, once you excluded the slopes that were within the existing footprint, they had to hire an engineer and they did hire an engineer to do the analysis and to remove these densities so they could prove that they could build this project. But it just, the question starts to come up, not everyone is going to have the resources that these guys did to hire an engineer to go and do this stuff. And is it really worth it on these small parcels to be really making people jump through that many hoops, rather than just go and say, how big is your parcel and how many units? That's the way 90% of the towns in Vermont are. How big is your parcel? That's how many units you have. Now, you may not be able to realize all of your potential if you can't fit enough cars on the parcel, off lot, off-street parking. You still have to meet your off-street parking requirements, you still have to meet bulk enassing requirements, you still have to meet setback requirements. It's not our obligation to make sure you can fully realize all of the density that's available to you. Even on Sibley, Sibley could have built 23 units, they were only proposing 16 because they couldn't possibly do to the slopes.
Given that they know where they wanted to build it and reasonably they didn't.
Well, if that had been a fully flat parcel, they could have.
So we have a motion on the table.
I just want to address one thing that you said, Mike. So that you talked about a particular project. Was that a project where they had four units and they were looking to go six?
That was, no, that was a, we had two of them on that same stretch of road, one of which was a single-family home that wanted to subdivide. And they had the area to subdivide, but they couldn't subdivide without first calculating whether or not they would have enough buildable area on the new lot.
But they're automatically allowed to duplex, according to the zoning. So if it was a one family, they should have been able to do it.
But they wanted to subdivide. They wanted to take their parcel and subdivide it into parcels.
Oh, subdivide parcels, I see.
And then use the second parcel to put another single-family home on, but they had to have enough buildable land on that parcel. So they have enough land. I mean, it's a res 3,000 and they had 8,000 square feet. Plenty of land to subdivide into two, 3,000 square foot lots, but they couldn't until they did a density calculation to determine whether or not they had enough density on each of the parcels.
But they should have handled it.
As interesting as each example is, I don't think it's really moving the discussion along very well and I, you know, we're already an hour in. So we have a pending motion from Barb, which was to go back and recalculate the densities for every zoning district. Is that the motion?
Based on this change to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote on this motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Or say nay.
Nay.
That's a little bit more clear.
What was that, John?
We're not used to voting nay.
So, okay, so the motion doesn't carry. What I did hear were some other suggestions based on this idea that we should probably do a little bit more legwork before we send this to council. Maybe not the level of detail of going through and redoing all the zoning or the density calculations, but I heard a couple of suggestions, one from Kirby, one from John. Maybe we can document these and turn these into a proposal.
Well, Mike indicated he doesn't have that information.
Well, some of it. So what can we give them?
Yeah, okay. What can we give them?
And my suggestion was made, and to the extent that it's not overburdened some on Mike and his staff, some basic information on how this will impact the city, I think that's a wonderful idea.
I think providing them with the map.
Can we take each zone and just, I mean, I guess the scale, at what scale do you look at this? But if the issue is, or I hate to say to each neighborhood, and look at the LIDAR for each neighborhood and just that particular parcel would then give you a sense of how much, how 30% slope there might be in any particular neighborhood.
Yeah, but it doesn't factor in a lot of the other factors that, it's just diluting everything down to a point, it's like I said, it's getting back to Sibley and saying, well, you've got, you know, 23 units, but they could never build 23 units. So even if we look at this and go and say, well, this will, you know, potentially allow a property owner on Prospect Street now could, instead of having just a single-family or a duplex, could now have a quadplex because we're calculating in this full 30% slope. But when you look at the parcel, you'd never be able to build it and put in parking for the four additional and for the two additional cars or it's not buildable anyways for other reasons other than the density.
But all we care about is looking at each particular neighborhood and seeing what the impact is of the slope.
I mean, I think all of this information should be conveyed to council with this. I mean, it's, the implications of removing buildable area from density calculations will be felt most prominently in these particular neighborhoods or these particular areas of the city. However, we do want to mention that various other restrictions from building may end up hampering development in those areas, even with the elimination of.
And the opposite is, can also be true though, is this, the 30% slope may be eliminating potential, like we said, we had to do this calculation for property on Elm Street even though they weren't building any buildings. They were just going to add two units to an existing building.
Okay, wait, we're going back to the one example thing again. I want to get away from that.
Not rabbit hole.
We do that a lot with the historic preservation folks that I.
But it's that type of, yeah, but it is that, the argument can be argued both ways.
Right.
So that same argument, they're going to say that they have the potential that they may never be able to realize.
I think we present.
We also can keep the rules in.
We present the options, we present our recommendation. So the options are, remove buildable area as we voted. Here are the potential implications, look at the map. Another option is keep that as it was, don't change anything and you calculate density based on buildable area, but if that's going to be the way we move forward, then we're going to need additional resources. We're not recommending that because we're concerned that it may not be a good use of resources, but it's ultimately a city council's recommendation. I think that maybe we draft a memo or something to this effect that has a little bit more detail in it.
I think Mike can probably convey that, right?
I don't.
I want to work on the plan.
I agree. I agree, but I.
A memo really shouldn't be too time consuming.
Will Barb and Mike, will you be able to work together on a memo? Because you each have opposites.
We have different opinions.
Well, that's why I know the memo is going to be valid.
We've had different opinions in the past, Mike.
I mean, I think that it's the two of you or it's someone completely neutral and then the two of you are going to have a lot of opinions, so it might as well just be the two of you.
Although I think both of you will be, probably be at city council and can probably express these ideas and have with the follow-up questions. I just want to make a motion, use the people's side, if you guys really want to write a memo, that's fine.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, John.
As a planning commission, or as a planning commission member, I'm saying there's not, I don't see a lot of value in getting into the details in a memo.
I'd like to go on record, so that's why I want to see it. I want to see the memo in writing and very clear. So that the planning commission will also, I mean, sorry, the city council will also see it in writing. And it's not going to take us forever.
No.
So, and you guys don't even have to, you know, concern yourself.
Well, we're probably going to want to review it if it's a planning commission recommendation.
Yeah, but once Mike and I have worked this out, it should be seamless, right, Mike?
Yes.
All right.
I'm willing to help if you need any help on the lifting as well.
I mean, my bigger interest, I mean, same as John, is this is really, a lot of these were meant to be rather straightforward review of issues that had come up in the zoning and that this was going to be a relatively quick amendment to the zoning. And I don't want us to get caught in. And I don't want us to get caught in rabbit holes on this for.
I agree. However, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just ignore potentially large policy implications. So we, you know, you're both, you're both right, you're both wrong. We're all right, we're all wrong. I mean, it's just how it is. These are not easy decisions, but I appreciate everyone working through this. Can I move on from buildable area and slopes?
Yes.
Okay. One more item on comments from the chair. I know we have comments from the chair. Yes, we're still there. I'm keeping track even if no one else is. You may have seen when you walked in, there was a slew of meeting minutes on the table. None of them have been put on the agenda for review for tonight, so we're not going to be voting on them or the ones that are on the agenda because those were not among the slew of minutes on the table. I was shooting in the dark when I made the agenda because Mike was on vacation, so, fine. Your task will be to look at the meeting minutes from these past minutes before our next meeting. And these are from the meetings of January 28th and 2nd, May 14th, July 9th, and July 23rd. Hopefully, we'll have August 13th to review as well at that point. And if not, we have plenty others to approve. And then we're going to go through them really quickly at the next meeting, so take a look at them in advance. Okay, that's it for comments from the chair. Item four, general business, which is comments from the public about something not on the agenda. We have one member of the public here, nothing, okay. Item five, let's talk about the all committees city plan kickoff meeting and next steps. I thought it was, it was energizing to see all of the, all of the people in committees working for the city and what, how much overlap there was. And I took a lot of notes and we have all of the goals downstairs in Mike's office, I believe.
Yep.
On those large pieces of paper.
Are those going to be typed up or can they be typed up?
Well, that's part of our discussion is what should we do now? I mean, how should we move forward? So typing them up sounds like a good.
Yeah, I'd love to review those to remember.
Yeah.
Something that was said.
Is that something, I mean, is that a task we can delegate to Tammy or to? I mean, Audrey probably has plenty on her plate. I just, I know you're.
Yeah, I can, I'll see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Just the broad topics, not all, any, any detail.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I might just be able, you know, find whoever to just go through and put whatever you're, because you took the notes and put the heading and then just type up whatever was literally on.
Whatever's there, yeah.
On there and just go and call it and bolt them right out.
Or even like photos of that, you know, at the very least, just to capture.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because I did generally ask the presenters to make sure that their goals were accurately reflected. So it would be great to see them typed up.
Be one of the first things we add to our website.
Of course, it might not be in all the correct order because I've got them all in sheets and I haven't actually.
Oh, it doesn't matter. They can be in any order.
They'll be in any.
It was random anyway.
Yeah, it was random.
No, I think there's potential overlap with a lot of them. And I don't want to lose our momentum and like John said, we should work on the city plan and not go back and rehash the zoning that we love so much.
Like this, you mean?
Yeah, well, there's some things we're going to have to do. But, you know, as far as today in this meeting, I would rather we spend the rest of our time talking about what we want to do for developing the city plan. Sorry, Mike.
Do you absolutely need us to go through these?
Well, we will continue ticking through them, but, but yeah, I mean, for today, I'm not sure how much time we're going to be able to give that and the city plan. We obviously needed to talk through some of the buildable area issue. So what are, I mean, I guess one of the first topics that we should discuss is with our website, committee members were asking whether there was going to be a folder for their committee or there'd be a folder based on topic. My inclination is that we should do it based on topic and have various committees contributing to it.
That would be my thought.
So I guess I would advocate for, by committee, just so people have their space. And we bring things together and organize the plan by topic, obviously, not by committee. And it'll be interesting to see where different committees, you know, may have the same recommended actions or strategies, but it may be.
Do you don't think it's going to encourage siloed work?
So I think the committees don't need to limit what they write to anything that's in that specific topic, right? So we can tag things in terms of advancing a goal in different, like the committees will have their folder, but what they write on doesn't need to be, they don't have to worry about the boundaries of being within, you know, that committee's purview necessarily or not. And then when we bring in, bring together all the, you know, goals, strategies, actions, targets, et cetera, hopefully with identified people responsible and relevant programs and projects, that's where the, where we have the fun exercise of putting things in different topics. And things can be in different topics, right? We don't have to, otherwise you end up with like, well, are we going to put this in housing or transportation? Or, you know, energy, or it kind of belongs in all of these. And now we're saying, just don't worry about it. Like, put down what that idea is and we can frame it in the plan afterwards. So that would be my suggestion, just for, for allowing people to work through it and understanding that some people are probably not going to embrace like the folder and whatever Google sheet we put out. So also having essentially, you know, an easier to use survey format or even maybe a box that's, people can write things in here at City Hall if they don't, you know, want to use a computer, do it digitally.
Who are you talking about in terms of people? Are you talking about the committees themselves?
Well, I think, I think everybody. I think hopefully the committees can have more structured input and can follow these guidelines. But I think we should try to be as inclusive as possible and capture as many different medians and levels of vulnerability and preferences and how people want to give us information.
So they did talk about a public input piece of the website, right? So they could use that potentially. So I'm not clear who you're talking about. Are you talking about committee members who might be putting things in or members of the law?
Both. I think committees, you know, we'll give them the option. We can pre-create folders with the templates and they can just jump in and use. If for whatever reason, committee is like, "We can't figure this out or we don't want to figure this out. Can't we just write this down for you?"
You figure it out, yeah.
We don't want to like, I think necessarily, hopefully our committees can respond to that. But I'm thinking of those people who are not maybe necessarily part of a committee to make sure that they also feel like they can provide input and ideas. Maybe we're getting away from question or from the answer.
I always want to have a brainstorm about the whole thing, so let it organically.
Yeah, I think I was going to originally go with what Les was thinking with the various topics, but I think you're, I like your ideas. It lets us be able to go back more easily to the originator of an idea. If we, if we just get everything in housing, we might not know whether that came from, you know, the housing committee. You know, we've got the housing task force, but we also have Montpelier Housing Authority. So, you know, who gave us that idea?
And they don't even have to try to put it in any basket. It'd be interesting just to look at all these ideas together. And we could set it up so that essentially they can just hit, when an idea is ready to go to the planning commission, they say, "Okay, we like where this is at now." They can select that one and then they'll all go into one place. And we'll know, we can go back and see, but we can also not do that and just look at them all together.
Could we set up the format in such a way that it would automatically link to a document that's by topic? So any mention of housing, at least for us, would come together into a particular housing document?
Oh, you mean tagging various.
So basically doing both of it, both of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could filter it that way. Or we could go through as an idea comes in. I mean, we could ask people to do it, but if you think it's simple enough for us or Mike or anybody to tag it under whatever baskets we want to look at, then.
Yeah, because ultimately it's going to go into chapters, so.
So one thing that came up in the meeting that stuck with me was when some of the committees asked, basically they were asking to be assigned a basket. And it made me realize that like, at this early stage, we don't want to narrow our thinking and we also probably don't want committees to feel territorial about like baskets or different chapters. So any, I think, I think what you're saying is great and the fact that it avoids territorial behavior or people thinking, limiting themselves unnecessarily, those are two things, I think, that we need to consciously try to make sure don't happen. And it sounds like both of those things are accomplished by setting it up. According to just have the committees go wild with any goals that they think are priority and then us worrying about categorizing them later, I think that sounds.
Maybe we set up like one pilot with one committee and say, "Hey, will you be our key pick?"
I think the energy committee.
Energy, housing are usually pretty good.
Yeah.
Actually, it'd be great to have two of them, so we could sort of look at that overlap, yeah. How the overlaps happen.
So maybe we, you know, within fire next meeting, aim to have that set up, the two committees.
Where are we on the formatting of the website? I mean, we, we don't have baskets set up.
That's pretty easy to do, though, I think.
For each committee yet, right?
Right, and I think the website, at least as far, for anywhere in the near future, I don't think we set up those types of baskets. It would be more like, here's how, right, there'll be folders and then people drive that everyone can go look at. But in terms of the website, it's, here's what's happening, here's how to participate, here's some background information on Montpelier. Here, we can also set up like the progress that the committees are doing in terms of your ideas that they've submitted so far. But in terms of like trying to, you know, get the chapters set up as individual pages right now, maybe I would recommend.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, oh, so if the energy committee has their, their goals that they want to put in, where would they put them? And you talked about having one, a file for each committee.
Right, right.
So are those files set up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the idea is doing the pilot one to committees to make sure that it's, or to identify, we know it's not going to be perfect, to identify those problems, get some feedback so that their, people are conveying their ideas or goals in the same or similar schema and format so that we can bring them together.
Is there a basic, you know, like basic information format that we might want each committee to fill out just so that, you know, we make sure we get the basic information to say for each?
Yes, and I think that's the key, getting that right and figuring out what works and doesn't with those first two committees and, and the planning commission. My original thought was to basically try to get, get things in two, two baskets. One, looking at goals and measurable objectives, so sort of like the what? And how do we know that one we've got there? And the other being strategies, which could be actions or policies. Rather than maybe, you could kind of split those up into, you know, here are our goals, here's our measures, our objectives. But I think limiting it to two and then having within those, you know, what is the objective here? What's the measure? How do we know when we accomplish it? What's, you know, target date or data source? And then is there any like background information or other documents that you could tie to this for the goals and objectives? And then the strategies, you know, what's the action or policy? What goal or does it relate to? Who would be responsible for this? Is there a project or a program that's linked to it?
Those might come later, you know, because that's quite a development.
Yeah, and I think there's going to be a certain amount of processing that's going to come through with, we're going to take and compile and go back to them to go through and, you know, because nobody's going to get it perfect. And, you know, so as long as we've got the idea of where they're going and what they're trying to do, the committee's trying to do, we can do a certain amount of processing to bring it back and go. And as long as we've got it relatively close, we can be able to bring it back and say, "This is how, this is what we heard, this is how we've kind of reworded your."
So to proceed, if we're going to do something before the next meeting, then is this, is there some kind of a base format that you want to put together or that you've already put together? And then we use that to get basic information and then start from there?
Sure, I can send that out this week. Some of it will probably be like coming up with, like on the page, some of the qualifiers or some instructions rather than just like a spreadsheet.
Sure, yeah.
With maybe a couple of examples. So what if I send that out and then we can all look at it and try to finalize that by the next meeting?
Yeah, I could try and input to it with the information that I have from the energy committee. We can see how that works.
That works, that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, if you could send it out and.
I'm sure Stephanie would be interested in helping you with that, too.
Yeah, she said she would be. For some of these other elements, like that would probably be premature for some of the committees or whoever to get into. Should we identify them now and maybe gray them out? But just to signal like, this is what we're going to be looking at and maybe to get them thinking about it. So if we're going to evaluate some of these things and try to prioritize, maybe have them thinking about it as well. Like, what's going to be, how effective is that? What's going to be the most effective thing that we can do with the least amount of risk? Like, try to get folks thinking of, like, how do we just make the most of our, our resources? Get the biggest, biggest bang for our buck.
I think that would be helpful for the committees to know where they're going with that. So we don't, they don't just get to a point and stop. And then we have to kind of get them energized again to go to the next step. But with the explanation that we're not expecting them to necessarily have this all under, in hand.
Don't do this, but think about it.
Right, think about it, yeah. It'd be great to have that. Yeah, I'm just thinking because Labor Day is, you know, between the two of us, so whatever you can get together.
And there was, what is it, Laura from the RDC sent an email.
From Montpelier.
Montpelier Development Corp.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Development Corp, yeah.
Had sent an email because she had worked on some stuff, I think, in Lancaster. So maybe she's just someone who could also put some time in working on this or has some ideas.
Did people read that article about Lancaster? Did you see it? It's Pennsylvania, right? Lancaster, Pennsylvania? Yeah, it was an op-ed in the New York Times that then got reproduced in the Times-Zargus. Oh, yeah, ironically, it's called, "Can American Politics Still Work?" But that's really not what it's about, it's about Lancaster. So anyway. And also maybe on the site, we could also put some of these other kinds of resources for, like the Ed McMahon tape, if we can come across, I guess we could, you know, anything that we could put there to sort of give them some background information.
Other than the Seekor art, which is of course inspiring.
Sorry, the what?
Do we, do we some Seekor art?
We do.
Oh.
I asked James Seekor, local artist, if we could use some images of his art.
Which is of Montpelier.
He was amenable to it, so.
Yeah, I like it. But, yeah, I think the Ed McMahon video, there's the TED Talk, and...
Sustainable Montpelier.
The sustainable Montpelier one.
And plans.
Yeah, and there's some, there's some other ones that are YouTube segments that I can submit that I think I sent out to most everybody.
Yeah.
Does Team Bridges have a...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we should definitely include that, too, yeah. So all of these video clips, yeah, we can have somewhere to live. Also, I'm wondering, I didn't think about this before, but do we want to have a place in this whole thing for the Team Bridges presentation? Because there's a lot of background information that is not yet necessarily part of the presentation.
Yeah, I think the same, we'll have a repository with all of these resources, just say, resources about planning in Montpelier, and we can include that there.
Yeah, it was nice that we're not limited by space or...
Yeah, I think we want these groups, because I know the Parks Commission has said, you guys should have a copy of the green print. Well, it's a great opportunity for them, you know, whatever they have as data, you know, I may not have everything down in the planning office, so if you've got it, put it in the Google Drive, and we all then have it, and we can decide what we want to link to, you know, because we're trying to keep this plan short when we're done, and we really want to be able to link to, you know, if we've got a green print that identifies this, we don't have to restate the green print, we just kind of summarize it in a sentence or two, put a link to it, and use that as an approach.
There's certainly several different proposals coming up in the next few weeks that potentially could be added on to this as well, such as the scoping study.
Yeah, the scoping study, complete streets plan, I mean, there's a lot of...
The parking garage.
Parking garage, a lot of proposals that we can just link to rather than rehash.
By the way, if people didn't know, September 5th is going to be the public comment discussion of the parking garage. And it's expanded version. I don't know if that's still going to be across the way or here.
I don't know, I haven't, I've been out for the past two weeks, basically.
I'm sure it'll be on the website.
They'll just came, yeah, they'll just change that today, because it was going to be this week, so...
Where the, I think, where the parking garage goes?
How it is, what it replaces.
Just changed, just changed. They just changed the location today.
They enlarged it, no, no, he didn't, but, no, he changed the location of the meeting, which was going to coincide with the scoping study, so it's no longer going to do that.
All right, go ahead.
I know we've talked about this before, but I just, I'm wondering, and remind me if we've discussed this before, so is the main outside of the committees, if other, are we going to have other ways to outreach to the public, or is it basically going to be this website, other comments? I mean, it could be that, really, that, you know, I don't want to over-drain resources trying to reach out to people who aren't interested in commenting on the city plan, but I did have a little bit of a concern after the meeting that, you know, it's a certain type of person, person like me, who wants to, you know, town committees, and if we can try and reach out to people who aren't that, you know...
I think one cool thing about the website is that we can all promote it separately in all sorts of different ways, once we get it up and running.
Yeah.
And we will have a series of public meetings.
Oh, okay.
I don't see how we can get away from that, actually.
Okay.
Although, it would be nice not to, to have other ways to engage with people, maybe people that we don't usually connect with, to get them involved, because sometimes public meetings are not, but those can do some constructive ideas and talk, so...
Right, well, it's, yeah, it's mostly, you know, people feeling like they had a chance to voice their issues, and so it can certainly be a combination. You could have a website, and we can have a page open, so people come to the public meeting, and they can just add in while they're listening, they don't even have to participate. But I think we're going to have to, I mean, judging how active the public participation was in the last master plan, I think we need to really seriously think about that.
Yeah, no, we definitely will need a lot of public input. I think all we're trying to do, or that I was trying to do with this one, is to try to go and focus the public input at a different step in the process. In 2009, you know, the world is your oyster, what would you like? And the public came in with a lot of ideas. And that's good, that's healthy, that's helpful, but when we then turn around and go and say, high energy committee, here's your energy plan, and they look at it and go and say, but we weren't involved, consulted, worked on, this may seem like great ideas to the public, but those of us who work in the industry see that there are better ways of doing it. So we're trying to just kind of turn the table a little bit and start with the energy committees, and develop a plan, and then kind of take that to the public, and go and say, this is where we would like to go, and if the public says they don't like it, then we've got to go back to the energy committees, transportation committees.
Maybe we could also say to the public now, who are interested in being involved, why don't you work through a committee? I mean, they could offer commentary to the committees, and then that might, you know, facilitate your process, because I agree, it would be a lot more workable to work through the committees, rather than just having it as an open, wide-open process. That was challenging. All 600 people, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, once we get through some of these goals that the committees have, we can start to put it to the public and put together a survey that asks, you know, is this something that you see as an important aspect of Montpelier? I don't know, crafting survey questions is challenging, but I'm thinking that with that content, we can, we would be better equipped to craft survey questions than we were previously.
Then the public could come out with, you know, oh, yeah, those are important, or they could even rank them, I suppose, but they could also add more issues that maybe the committees haven't considered.
Yeah.
And if we have the hub, stuff come through, that would be a nice opportunity.
Yeah, I'm hoping the hub would be a good opportunity.
Oh.
Yeah.
If we get that grant, yeah.
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 Are we going to have a high school student joining us? I was just thinking about that, you know, engaging the youth, is that pending?
I haven't heard anything.
On the planning commission? Heard anything either.
Oh, maybe no one is interested?
I did the survey, I mean, well, high school hasn't started back yet.
Oh, okay.
So, if it follows elementary school, it'll be this Wednesday, it'll be the first day. So, yeah, maybe a month from now, well, yeah, we'll hear about that.
I mean, we could specifically reach out to the schools, rather than just one particular person, and maybe they could have their own survey determining what students feel as important about the city.
She's talking about, when the, yeah, when the high, because the high school had reached out to all of the city, and so we did the survey, and then, so I think that there will be a student from some class or program they're doing, be assigned to us, and start showing up at our meetings.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I was sort of thinking just in general about engaging.
Yeah, engaging them, yeah.
Schools, it seems like, but...
So it sounds like for the next meeting, in advance of the next meeting, John is going to put together some templates or some sort of mechanism for us to input some content. Barb's going to work with, I think Stephanie will probably want to...
I'm trying using...
But I think, I think engaging with Barb on behalf of the energy committee, Laura Gebhardt, who has some experience with this, Stephanie, and then I will try to dig up all of the various links that I've been sent for the basic repository that can be my job here. So we have something to review for the next meeting and see how that seems to be working. And so that'll be our pilot folders, so I think folders for a couple of committees, and then the general resources tab or whatever would be a good place to start. I think that's a good, good step. I just, I want to make sure we keep moving forward, but I don't think we need to be at a very crazy clip or anything, I don't think the committees will be able to keep up if we did, and maybe they would, I don't know, but I want to make sure we keep our momentum going, so...
I was impressed with how many committees came, given the pretty short notice.
Yeah.
I was very impressed.
They jumped right in, so that was great.
Yeah, and I think, Mike, you and I need to compare the list that we have and make sure we've got all of the additions that have been added since...
The additional committees, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think Donna Bate mentioned that she believed there were more committees than...
So we need to identify if we haven't heard from anybody, we need to make sure our list is comprehensive as well, so I think there's two parts of that.
Yeah, we know the school, we know we heard from the school board. This is Mary Hooper, and her email talked about the fact that we could have included the school board, and maybe we should get them for the next time.
Yeah, so I think if we, Mike, if you and I can figure out who we haven't heard from, and who are the suggested additional committees that we have or haven't heard from, we make sure we just have a comprehensive list of everybody that we're engaging with. And Jamie Grenfeld sent us the email list that my letter went to, but I wasn't able to open up the contacts on that, I don't know if you were?
No, I had her send them individually to me because of that.
Okay.
It was just the list of committees or groups that she had contacted.
Yeah, the data that she sent us just wasn't, it didn't, I don't, it must have been a software issue, so, okay, so...
I tried a lot of things, but I was, it defeated me.
I tried it, yeah.
My LED lights.
Oh, okay.
Looking for that, like, you couldn't find, you know, it's really challenging.
It was an Outlook thing, so I used Outlook to open it, and I also downloaded some things to try to open it, no, nothing worked.
So, anyway, okay, so I think that's, that's something we need to do, and I think we need to maybe create a list to be posted on our website of all the committees that we're collaborating with, so... That will be my task in conjunction with Mike and Kirby, who apparently has all their contact information.
Well, you can, you were copied on the thing I sent out, so look there for the all of them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so we do have time to move on to zoning, our zoning punch list, so that's item six on the agenda. I don't know that everybody has their copy with them, I can share mine, but Mark and, Mike and Barb, you can also share with your neighbor.
Do you know what number we...
We were on, we've got a, we've kind of...
We jumped around.
Picked a few, but 28 would be the next one on the list.
Oh, okay.
And I did color code the most recent one. You've got an older one.
Is this the most recent one?
The most recent one has color, yes.
Oh. Yeah, this, that's right, this is the one that has my comments, but listen to this. So you haven't changed any numbers on the color?
I don't...
No, he did, I thought he did.
Yeah, there might be some changes.
All right, well...
I've tried to, I've tried to add them now only to the end, so don't mess with everybody's number.
So before the color, I think you inserted them in.
Yeah, I did, because I got new ones. But on the left-hand side, if they're green, those were the ones that I assumed didn't need to be talked about or not talked about too much, and yellows were the ones that I at least need to mention that there's something of concern to be talked about.
So 26 on the colored one?
26 and 27 were the last two that we finished.
Did we do frontage build out?
Yes.
Oh.
PC agrees, delete figure 3-03. All right, so, yeah, there must be another one later than that one.
Uh-oh. Colored version?
Yes, but I'll, I'll print out new ones for the next meeting, but, next one I had with figure 3-07, remove parking areas as accessory structures. But I don't know if we want to talk about the green ones, or if we want to just jump to the yellow ones.
Well, are we going to have to talk about the green ones at some point?
Well, we were just going to do them as consent, because they're mostly smaller issues.
Unless you identified a concern, Barb. Kim's notes, I have Kim's notes in front of me, and he, well, his might be outdated, too, actually, huh? His is dated the 20, July 22nd.
Why were there any various accessory structures in there?
Well, that was why it's being removed, is because they showed up as accessory structures, and therefore had to start meeting all of the setback requirements of accessory structures in...
That was a glitch.
That was a glitch, so I was just saying, remove it.
And the next one?
Are we jumping to 30, or are we going to...
Yeah, I mean...
I'm in favor of just doing it by consent, and then, I mean, this isn't the, this isn't the last opportunity by any means, next time we look at these, if there's one that we already passed over, we can revisit.
Okay, so item 30, well, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, is I...
I guess I already looked at that one, so...
So the issue with number 30, so this is talking about demolition of historic structures, is in one sentence, under applicability, it says, anything that is on the state and national register, while under D2, it says something is either on the state or national register. And that's not as big of an issue as additionally, the current practice has not been either of these, but rather, it is applied only to the contributing structures within the national registered district. So what this is talking about is who needs to, the demolition, which historic structures that are being proposed to be demolished need to go through this review process? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
That's the big question, because the way the current rules are written, we've got some issues in that I don't have a database, I have a database for everything within the national registered district, I have a map color-coded, which ones are contributing, which ones are not contributing, but that's only for the national registered district, which is also historically what was only being regulated. The way this is worded, things that are on the state list that are outside the registered district would now also need to be, and I don't have a map showing that.
That are outside the district?
Yes, so...
And the owner has to go through some act of process to be put on the state list?
Nope, they're already on the state list, the state has surveyed, but it's in big brown books on the shelf.
So it's not online, like the national registered listing is?
It, it's, I mean, there's a PDF online, yes, but it's, we've got the historic district, but the question will start coming up, the question basically is going to come up for other buildings, we need to then evaluate which ones are historic, which ones are on the register, and what, well, which ones do we want to apply the rules to?
So the question is about the Vermont?
Yeah, give us, give us a set of rules that you want to enforce. If you want to enforce this town-wide, any historic building town-wide, then that just means I'll have to put together the resources to do that from a map.
Is it eligible or contributing?
A little confused with that, this rule. Is, that's a good question, whether it says eligible for, or whether it says is on the... or whether it says is on the state register. Because if it's eligible, that gets to another completely different level.
It says on the 3004?
Yep.
It says on the Vermont Historic Sites and Structures Survey and the National Register. And?
Yeah, well, that one says and, and then. Then let me get 3004. Um, so if you're looking on page 3-9 on your book, under demolition, it says, um, and. But on 3-10, number two, it says or. So we should be consistent as to whether we mean and the list or or the list.
And how did the Vermont Historic Sites and Structures Survey get added to this? I guess, I thought we were always talking about the national register. And so, um, I don't remember discussing the Vermont Historic Sites survey. Where did it come from?
It's. I think some of this was added, some of this is, this is in 304, so this is stuff Brandy added. But some of this was taken from the old, some of, I think some of the standards are taken from the old zoning and pulled forward. So I think we just had a little bit of inconsistency, because I know in practice, that's why Cedar Street was able to be demolished without meeting demolition standards. It was a historic structure and it was demolished. And I think there was one over on North Street that was also demolished.
Because they were out of the district?
Because they were out of the national registered district. So they didn't have to meet these standards. But under the new zoning, it kind of is written as if they now would need to go through.
Because they are listed.
Because they're listed in the state.
But not necessarily in the district.
Yeah. And so we don't have maps for them. And the question was really, okay, let's take a step back and just decide, what's our policy? Do we just really care about demolition of historic structures within the historic district, which is the cleanest, easiest for us to enforce because we've got the maps for it? Or do we want to have something bigger than that?
Well, what's been the, aren't we, aren't we going with sort of existing practice until we sort of revise everything?
Yes, except that that's not what's actually written in the rules. And that was the issue, is now that we're revised, now that we're doing a cleanup, this, this is mostly supposed to be trying to do some of our cleanups. And that came up in our cleanup list was, hey, wait, we've got two issues. One is, it now appears that we're enforcing demolition townwide, not just in the historic district. And two, we've got this and/or thing where it talks about and in one section and or in the other. And we really should be consistent there as well.
Yeah, that one is easier to clean up.
That's easier to clean up.
Yeah.
I just need to know what we're.
Is this something that the historic commission, preservation commission is going to want to weigh in on?
We could certainly get their, their input.
I mean, if we just do something now, they may bristle at not having been consulted.
So just put a note, get HPC input at this point.
Sure.
And then move on. All right. So if we skip to 31, this is talking about riparian areas.
Oh, yeah, buried streams.
And buried streams. We now have, have, uh, two of them. So for anyone who wants to just look at what we're talking about, this is, this is Berry Street. And this is Wheelock. So, I mean, you'll notice, there's just a stream that, that has, for decades, been buried.
In a big culvert.
In a big culvert. But the issue is, we have stream water setback and buffer requirements that now apply to people's backyards because there's a culvert running through their backyard and we just need to go and revise that. There was also an application over on Route 302, um, well, I'd say a couple of weeks ago now because it's been out for a little bit. But it's another one where there's a culvert that goes under their parking lot. And the question was, are we applying a water setback to that parking lot? And do they, you know, there's vegetation requirements, there are all these requirements, except it's a paved parking lot that this culverted stream runs through.
So we haven't handled this one before? I know we've talked about it before.
I think we talked about that one before, but we, we just mentioned it, I think I mentioned it as a.
Just discovering them all over town now.
Yeah.
Because what's happening.
Water's going to start popping up.
Yeah.
Seems reasonable.
So the, the thing that comes up is.
Okay, I think you've got your.
We can map it or we can, I can come up with a process for.
If it's in a culvert.
If it, if it's in a culvert, these are the rules that apply.
Yeah.
I think that is probably the best thing to do.
I'll draft some rules. All right.
33.
Already done 32, right?
32 is already done.
Oh, yes.
30.
One note on 32 is that Kim, Kim had a note, which is, "Criteria for DRV waivers should be stated", which is what John Adams mentioned too, which is, uh, to the extent that we're going to allow for building on steep slopes, we should probably give some specific criteria.
Yep.
Of what will be acceptable. So I think having more detail about what the engineering plan should entail may accomplish that, but we'll probably just need to discuss that a little bit more.
Yeah, well, at least at this point, I've got a, a framework that I can start putting things together and writing. A lot of, a number of these yellow ones, I need to draft language for, but I didn't want to draft language until I kind of knew.
Yep.
And I think that's the same for 32. Now that I know what we want to do, I can draft up some language and we can do some wordsmithing.
Is that, is that one where you could borrow from somewhere? Like, seems like we wouldn't be the only city that would allow building on slopes, but, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
To get an idea of what other cities of concerns were.
It's not writing zoning ordinances, it's just kind of pasting from other zoning.
I think so. You don't, yeah, no.
All right, so number 33.
So yeah, these 33s that, um, 308B, I think that's slopes.
Erosion control.
Erosion control. Applicability, uh, the first sentence is not applicability, it's either purpose, move it up, or some kind of performance standard, move it down. Considering the intent of this, of the statement is generally captured already in C1, I would just strike it. 34, also isn't 3008, inconsistency in how slope is broken down.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's stay with 33.
Oh, okay.
Before we move on, because, um, just want to make sure anybody who wants to comment on it has a chance.
So all you're suggesting is to strike the first sentence under applicability? It's a long sentence.
308.08B.
Yep. Ends with natural resources. Is that what you're proposing, Mike?
Yes.
And then, so that 3008.08B would begin, the provisions of this section apply?
Yep.
Okay.
That's actually the applicability.
I mean, that sentence is actually a requirement.
Well, in which case, well, the, the 3008.08B.
Yeah.
Is talking about applicability. What needs to meet erosion control?
I know.
The first sentence is a standard. So either we have to move it down.
I don't think we should strike a requirement without talking about it. So the requirement is, "All construction activities that will disturb soil shall implement appropriate measures to prevent erosion and sedimentation from adversely impacting nearby properties, public infrastructure, or downstream water bodies." And then in parentheses, it says, "For further guidance, see Vermont Agency of Natural Resources Low Risk Site Handbook for Erosion Prevention and Sediment Control." So yeah, I agree, this doesn't belong in applicability, but I don't know if we want to strike it altogether. Maybe what we want to do is.
It's not purpose either, is it? I mean.
No.
But the section C.
C.
Says, "You shall submit and implement a professionally prepared erosion control plan in accordance with Vermont Standards and Specifications of the Erosion Prevention and Control.
All right, so it doesn't, okay, yes, okay, yes. So let's just strike it, it's accomplished down there.
It seems redundant.
Yeah, it is, yeah, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Um, I actually have to leave right at 7:30, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, that's a good cue for us to wrap up anyway. Um, go ahead if you need to go.
Okay, all right.
Um, thanks. So we're going to keep going through this at the next meeting,